Welcome to On the Warrant. My name is Mark DeSalvo. I'm the elected town moderator, joined today by several of our colleagues who lead town government. From right to left, Alyssa Koenig, who is a chair of our school committee, Pamela Lathrop, who is superintendent of schools, our Escamoville Town Manager, Melissa Rodriguez, Brian Roach, who chairs the select board, and Donovan O'Connell, who's chair of the FinCom. We do this show on an annual basis. This is now the 14th annual meeting in which we've done this little reprise as to what's going on at town meeting. It's an invitation, most importantly, for you to get to know more about what you need to know in order to attend town meeting on May 13th, Tuesday, at 6:30 at the North Andover High School. The meeting will be held in the Field House at that time. We anticipate a rather large meeting. We have a lot to discuss. And I think the most important question for me to ask right now is, is there anything interesting going on in town? I think that there are. We'll ask the town manager to give us a little reprise of the most important issues that you think are in front of town meeting right now.
Sure, I'm happy to, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Interestingly, it's kind of a shorter agenda than we usually have with only 28 items total. Two are citizen petitions, about five are planning board articles, and the rest of them really are pretty financial in nature. Obviously, the big item is the town budget, looking at about $135 million budget this year. It's up almost 7% from last year, with about 10% of that going to the schools, a little less than 1% to town offices and town government, and then finally, our fixed costs going up by 12%.
Now, isn't that a little unusual? It seems to be a much larger increase than we've had in prior years.
It certainly is, and I think one of the things that people will be talking about is that we had previously had a plan to save some levy capacity to use for our future facilities master plan two projects, and that our three boards have come together, they made the determination to use those funds early in order to offset some deficits that the schools are facing.
So I think we ought to dive right into that. That's going to be the principal thing that I believe most people are going to be interested in this year's town meeting. Let's turn to the school committee and the superintendent. How did we get to this point?
When we talk about how we got to this point, as far as what the school budget is now, because we, I guess I'm going to back up a little bit.
Back up as long as you would like.
I think originally, we got to this point with the COVID funds. The schools were funded, we got a lot of grants due to COVID. It allowed us to hire positions at the school, and eventually, that money stops, and we have these extra expenses that now we haven't been accounted for into a budget. And so that put us into a deficit. Now, we're trying to remedy that and make sure that we don't end up back in that place.
So what is the remedy in terms of what's necessary in order to fund the schools appropriately, have appropriate instruction, and still be fiscally responsible?
Right, it's a great question. So we started looking at, I think, one of the biggest jobs that we did this year was to create what would be a level service budget if we were taking everything we were doing right now and moving forward. We knowing that that was probably going to come in much more, much higher than what we anticipated, but it did help us to see what we were spending our funds on in the district, where our money was going towards. And as Ms. Koenig just said, one of the things we recognized is that we had put a lot of positions into the budget using Ezra funds, but didn't account for those numbers.
So one-time funds?
One-time funds, right.
For sustainable use.
Correct. And the other piece that we looked at is that our enrollment is declining in our schools, and the increase of positions was increasing. So you have less students, but we're adding more positions. So we had to take a hard look at that and decide which positions were critical for us. And one of the places we focused on was elementary and looking at our elementary schools. And we were in this really unique situation where we are looking to build a new Kittredge Elementary School, and there are some opportunity if you have a clean site and what that school could look like. And we also had a dip in enrollment. And if we were able to, what we ultimately have decided to do is take that school offline for a little while, which can help us with the financial impact that it has on the district, make enrollment a little bit more consistent throughout the district, and we have a nice new clean site in order to build our school on.
So there's been an extended discussion in the community about what the town, and most particularly, the school committee budget should be. How did you land there?
Well, we originally--
And what is it?
Yeah, sure. So we originally had the town manager's recommended budget.
A guidance budget.
A guidance budget, yes. And after, then Pam put together that level services budget, there was obviously, there were big gaps between that. So then we had to take a hard look at, okay, well, this is a level services budget that we, well, Ms. Lathrop inherited from the prior administration. So she had to go through and look and say, all right, where are we overspending, or where can we make some adjustments? How can we make this work where we know we can't get down to the guidance budget? Maybe there's somewhere in between. And she was able to work on a couple extra budgets that she brought before the school committee. And they had different services and what those budget cuts would mean. The school committee, after a lot of discussion, decided that we need to be very cognizant in the budget that we're putting forward because we want, like I said before, don't want to be back in the position that we've been in, and we want to be able to sustain ourselves going forward. So we landed on a $68.2 million budget, and we feel like that's a budget that we can, after long discussions with Ms. Lathrop, that she can work with in our district, and then we can also plan for the coming years.
So are there initiatives in the budget as well, or are we just taking cut after cut in order to get down to a number?
There are, so it's another great question. There are initiatives in that we have set goals for ourselves in terms of high-quality instructional materials, and that is our plan to move forward, to be able to continue the work that we're doing in the elementary, move it to the middle school, and start curriculum work in the high school. We also have teacher leaders that have been working within our school, and we want to be able to sustain those teacher leaders, and we're able to do that. We have been really fortunate to be involved in some of the Department of Education's grant funding in terms of deeper learning. Our high school is looking at accreditation, which has you start looking at what's our vision for a graduate. So what do we want to see when you graduate from North Andover High School? What's that look like? And what's the trickle effect of that and how we really need to start in pre-K in order to get there? So there are initiatives within this budget, but there are also cuts. And I think that we've, you know, we've talked a lot about that. The community has heard about the cuts, and they're concerned about the cuts. I think one of the things that's challenging is that the cuts, while there may have been more cuts to one particular level, it doesn't mean that they're not having that programming. So I think it's important that the community looks at, I sent out the last budget update in our newsletter, but really looks at what position will be lost in the high school, in the middle school, as opposed to how many people were cut from that. Because the way the cuts work is that if you're by seniority, so I may have cut six people from the high school, but four people from the middle school may be going into that position.
So the school committee has the unique responsibility of making a judgment as to what it thinks is both appropriate for the community in the moment and then looking forward as well. If I can turn to process, after the school committee makes the independent judgment that it chooses to make, it goes to the finance committee--
It does.
--and you get to make a call. What is your responsibility, Donovan?
So our responsibility is to take a look at the budgets that come before, that the town manager and the select board put forward, and that the school committee and the superintendent put forward, and to make a recommendation at town meeting whether they should be in favor of the budget or maybe not in favor of the budget, but it's to take a look and do a deep dive, look at the numbers, spend a lot of time and hours looking at the numbers, looking at the priorities, looking at all the scenarios and the machinations, and coming up with a recommendation for town meeting.
So before we dive specifically into your recommendation on the school department, the six of us, five of us, thank you, six of us, were involved in a pretty interesting meeting where the tri boards got together. And Brian, if you could describe the process in which the community needed to help guide itself in order to get to a final judgment that the school committee made, and then ultimately, what will be done at town meeting? Perhaps you can help us.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that was actually, it was the second of two tri board meetings that we had during the year. We have a standard meeting every year that discusses capital, right? The capital needs at the schools, capital needs at the town. We felt this year collectively, given some extraordinary challenges, that a meeting of the three boards in a less formal, more problem-solving oriented fashion was important, and that's what we did at that particular meeting. And I think it's a testament to the three boards coming together to recognize that the school priorities may be a little bit different than the town priorities, and their responsibility to advocate zealously for that, but at the end of the day, our goal as one community is to try and solve the problem, make North Andover be the strongest community that can be. I think it was a very productive meeting in that sense, to really hear the challenges that everyone was facing, to hear from the community members. I think it was a very open and transparent meeting. And it's not critical that we all, three boards, agree on every aspect of how we get to where we want to get, but when we do all agree, I think that actually says something strong to the community that, you know, as a group, you know, however many there are us, 19 of us, have looked at this closely and said, yes, this week, we feel this is the best path forward for North Andover as a community. So I was privileged to be a part of that meeting, and I think it was really beneficial to the community.
And Donovan, you published as a finance committee a rather extraordinary document this year, full of wonderful graphics and a lot of history--
Thank you.
--much appreciated by the work that this volunteer group does. Help us where you landed specifically on the school budget issue, and then we'll expand our conversation across the town.
Sure. So first of all, thank you, because we did put a lot of work into it. I think we challenged ourselves to come up with a little bit of a different format this year. The past few years was very text-heavy in the form of a very generic letter that sort of had been done historically. I mean, not to say that different forms hadn't been done before, but we challenged ourselves to do it in a different way, given the extraordinary circumstances of the year, during the strong feelings that were sort of shared at the tri board meeting that we had and that sort of thing. So we took an approach that was a little bit different. It is very graphic and chart-laden, but ultimately, we decided to recommend the proposed school budget and the proposed town budget to the voters at town meeting. We think it's a strong, you know, look, every budget is a balancing act, right? And this one in particular is tricky. There are a lot of needs across both the municipal budget and the school budget, and the finance committee recognizes that, but really feels that the plan put together by the school committee and the superintendent, and then by the town manager and the select board, both make a lot of sense, both in the short term to fix, like I said, the extraordinary circumstances we're in, but also plan accordingly for the long term, that both give us some stability, maybe take a little bit of a hit in the near term in terms of using additional levy capacity. So, you know, look, people's taxes are going to increase a little bit, but it puts us on a sure footing moving forward so that we can do all of the things that we still have planned on doing over the next few years and give the schools the opportunity to continue to grow and put themselves in a position to succeed, we think.
So there's clearly a consequence to whatever the vote is at town meeting, and our job is to inform the community so that it can make whatever final judgment--
Absolutely.
--it chooses to make at town meeting on May 13th. But to Melissa, help me with the consequences and understanding, even if the recommendation of the finance committee is accepted by the community, what happens in both the next fiscal year and how we plan for future years?
Sure, so everything we do with the plan, right? And sometimes those plans do change as we move forward because the graphics and the knowledge changes. One of the things that we're facing is that we will need a debt exclusion for Kittredge now, which we would not have needed previously. So if you remember correctly, the levy capacity that we have is actually all attributed to the Amazon tax incentive financing agreement, and the plan was--
Which was adopted by town meeting several years ago.
Which was adopted by town meeting, yes. And the plan was to bring that money on slowly so that that would not impact taxpayers. If we move forward with the $135 million budget, taxpayers are impacted by about 6% to 7% on their tax bill, and it also means that we will have to go for a debt exclusion for Kittredge, which would be about $250 additional on that in fiscal year '27.
Now, there's some expectation that motion or amendment, to be more exact, may be made at town meeting to increase the recommended school budget. How will that affect both the current, the next fiscal year and follow-on fiscal years if assuming the number I've heard is somewhere there about $1 million, an additional $1 million in spend? What are the consequences of that action?
Sure. So the consequence for the average taxpayer is about $100. It's about $100 per million raised. But the secondary consequence is that, one of the reasons why we're advocating to leave that levy capacity is that in fiscal year '27, the schools do have a negotiated 4% cost of living increase. And if you think of Prop. 2.5, which is what limits the amount that the tax levy can go up, we know that the tax levy can only increase 2.5%, and 4% is more than that. So we have to kind of plan for that, and we have to know that's coming. And so what we've thought is that next year, we're going to face hard times again, right? We know that we don't have a lot of new growth coming forward right now. If it was coming, it already would be in the pipeline, that planning. So we're trying to prepare ourselves for that fiscal year '27 increase.
So what I'm hearing is that in effect, we've got a multi-year plan, both relative to what the operating needs of the community are, but also the capital needs and supporting the debt obligations that we already have. Any commentary about--
Well, I'm not building on what Ms. Koenig said earlier, but sustainable, right? And that's part of the, you know, the number that I think was landed at wasn't picked out of thin air. It was looking carefully at the numbers that we had available to us, what we know our costs are going to be down the road, and what we still want to try to accomplish as a part of Facilities Master Plan 2 and not end up back in the situation over again. I think it's, you know, very likely, down the road, we're going to need to find a path to more revenue. I think that's just staring us all in the face. We all know that. And by being careful and intentional about it this year, we know what our plan will be for next year so that we can still accomplish the things we want to accomplish as a community, even if those plans do change as to how we get there.
So let us segue at this moment to the general government and the proportion of general government that is that total $135 million budget, and what initiatives might you be dealing with and/or consequences in the terms of cuts or diminishment of services if in fact that's necessary?
So there are no new initiatives in the town budget. Like I said, we have our fixed costs increasing by 12%, which is really difficult, right? Retirement up by nine really is painful, right? Something that we can't really plan for. And so we have to look at that and then look at what the schools' needs were this year, and that meant that the town budgets really could only increase by less than 1%. Our code was negotiated at 3%. So we knew that that was going to result in cuts at that point. Some of the cuts that you'll see is the amount of overtime available to the police department. We had cut a captain's position in the fire department, and we're unable to fund an additional captain's position that were planned. We're going to have less hazardous waste days next year. We will have less money for fuel, less money for veterans' benefits. Right now, veterans' benefits has run to a point where we think we can take that risk, but, you know, it's all a risk. We are reducing our training conference budgets and supply lines across the board. One thing that we were able to keep whole, I think really importantly, is the finance committee reserve. And so that continues to be funded at the $1.5 million. And having that account over the last four years has really kept us out of a lot of hot water when it has come to our deficits.
Well, and let's talk about that hot water. The school committee and the superintendent have been honest about prior year problems. How did we solve those problems, and did town meeting plan for the solving of those problems with a stabilization or other reserve?
So I think, you know, the, you know, due in part to the strong work by our town manager in conjunction with our superintendent, the problem was solved previously through a very, through many different methods, right? One such method was using the entirety of the FinCom Reserve Fund, right? Which is $1.5 million. There has been a request this year for some additional money from that same fund to help the schools, and, you know, we're supportive of that again--
In the current fiscal year.
In the current, in the current fiscal year, exactly right. So we're supportive of that again, but, you know, the answer to your question is, there are really a variety of ways that these funds were, or the shortfalls were addressed, but I think the most important one is that they are, they now have, or the most important thing to mention here, I think, is that they now have a full understanding of their costs and what the budget should be moving forward. And that puts us in a position to make strong financial decisions and plans moving forward that we can count on the numbers and the budget to not be surprising at the end of the year so that we don't have, hopefully, don't have to pull levers like this moving forward.
Do we have a reaction here on the right?
So one of the things that we ran into is when we did the audit, when we had the audit after we discovered this deficit, it was discovered that we didn't have a lot of historical data on how our budget was being formulated, how it was put together, and where we were spending the school district's money. So when Ms. Lathrop came in and we had voted on the FY '25 budget, again, like I'd mentioned, it was an inherited budget. It wasn't one that we knew wasn't funded correctly at the time, and, you know, Ms. Lathrop has been able to take the lack of information, and she's built a budget basically from the ground up so that we can accurately account where we are spending. And she's put a lot of work into that, where we can be more confident in where we're spending that money, where we didn't have that data before.
So establishing a new foundation of credibility has been a goal of the school committee--
Absolutely, yes.
--and the new superintendent.
Absolutely.
So let's talk about that for a quick moment. We heard reference that of the likelihood of at minimum a debt exclusion override in order to follow through with the new initiative of a brand-new and expanded Kittredge school. Tell us about that project a little bit, its history, and what its general cost would be, both to the community, and as I understand, quite significant portion of it will be paid for by the Commonwealth.
Yes, I may ask our town manager and finance committee to help me out a little bit with that, because they've been sitting on the Kittredge School--
Talk right through, that's quite right.
--building committee.
The $74 million project?
Yes.
And about 37% of the expenses will be reimbursed by the state currently. We are online to continue that calendar, so--
We are.
--we just put forward our preferred schematic using, as the superintendent referenced earlier, the full site, really for a project that I think ended up being really positive for the Butters and for the students. We got really good feedback about the new placement of it. We did a survey, we received--
We received more responses than we ever have in any of our surveys that we have sent out, when we sent that out to the community in terms of the new site and the ability, what the new schematic could look like. We were really pleased to be able to have such a great response, and it really sort of set us forth to be able to, we actually finished the PR Paris ahead of time, to be able to send that in, the schematic design, so.
And so that will be at next town meeting, May 2027. You'll see a debt exclusion for that, and so what that requires is not only two-thirds voted town meeting because it's debt, but also election. So we'll see both of those next year, and hopefully, we'll be breaking ground on a beautiful new Kittredge school.
May 26, right?
Yes, May 26, town meeting, fiscally.
Fiscal 27, right.
Thank you.
And I think it gives us an opportunity to have the one year of just what we said. We set a budget that we can live within, knowing what our needs are, and that we can really confidently tell the community why we need this debt exclusion, what this new school is going to bring to our town. The current Kittredge school is over 70 years old. We build schools to last around here, but this town really does deserve a new state-of-the-art school building that can be used by both students and community members alike.
So we, that's not the only capital budget that we're dealing with right now, and there's been a continued effort to have a sustained and planned capital budget program. Perhaps we can talk about what are the articles that we'll be dealing with on Tuesday, the 13th? What is in the capital budget this year?
Sure. So we have two separate capital articles this year, a little different than usual. We have one that is debt. It does not require an exclusion, so it will not be an election, and it's actually paid through our Water Enterprise Fund, so it does not have an impact on taxpayers as well. One of those projects is the demolition of 400 Great Pond Road. So if you remember correctly, at a past town meeting, the town voted to buy 400 Great Pond Road in order to protect our water source. It's an interesting demolition. It's a building that's inside of our lake, so we will be taking that on, so that's part of that debt. The other part is improvement to our water treatment plants. And then in our regular capital plan, we have 45 projects. It's a hefty plan, it's almost $15 million. The big, I think, most exciting one probably is $3.2 million for our high school fields and $100,000 for the design of an addition for the youth center.
And talk to us about the plans on the high school fields for a moment, and then we'll go to the youth center plans.
Ms. Lathrop, please.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so the high school fields, they have been meeting regularly. Steve Nugent, who's our director, our athletic director, has been--
Steve Nugent?
Yes, Steve Nugent has been really spearheading that in order to have appropriate fields for our baseball players. We had put some great work into the track this year, but our fields need appropriate drainage, they need to have appropriate play area for our athletes. But we are working with our residents nearby to making sure that we are being considerate of the houses that are close by and what the impacts might be, but our fields need to be upgraded.
And I know that that includes the use of artificial turf, and we've had some turmoil at town meeting in the past years around artificial turf.
Yes.
Is that the plan as well? That there'll be turf? And something that the, has the select board and the FinCom endorsed the plans as exist?
Yes, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt here, talk over you. Mr. Moderator, I apologize. You didn't have a gavel to bang me down.
I never use a gavel, as you know, so.
I do, I do. No, the finance committee is fully supportive of the capital plan this year. We think it's a good plan that's fiscally sound, and again, takes into account the short-term spending and long-term benefits of what these projects will bring forward for the town and the community as a whole.
As is the select board, and we're very pleased with the capital plan with what we're still able to do despite some of the recent financial challenges that we've had in recent years, and, you know, we're excited for a major project at the high school like this. You know, when people talk about the school budget overall, they don't even necessarily think about the capital budget, the capital portion that goes into it, to continue to reinvest in our schools' facilities, and the high school field, like, is a great example of that. It needs to be artificial turf. It's next to an artificial turf field currently. And, you know, one of the things we can deal with so much in New England is playability, right? We've got, we lose those shoulder seasons, and there's a lot of stress and demand for use on our field space, so in the long run, we feel it's a--
Well, I suspect the community will be having a conversation about that at town meeting. Let's talk about the youth center.
Yeah, so the youth center is part of the Facilities Master Plan 2, and it is about a 6,000-square-foot addition, that would be programming space, something that they have been lobbying for, I think Rick Goleman would tell you, for 30 years. Might be longer, Rick, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but it's been quite a long time, and they're really excited to get started on that design. So there's $400,000 in that budget and start that design for them.
And are there other initiatives in addition to what's in the capital budget? Let's talk about community preservation right now.
Sure, so they had quite a few projects this year that were pretty interesting, I think. Townwide, we have them working on the Stevens Stables, which is a great project that we're really looking forward to seeing finalized. You know, Fire Site Catering took that over from us, and this year actually beat the threshold on their lease to have to give us more money from their revenue, which is great, so they're seeing big success, and I think that will continue that.
There's a little scheme here that I think needs to be recognized, that we've dealt with a lot of these issues in prior town meetings, and it's good to see the continued progress and the meeting of expectations and criteria that has existed in the past that would have been represented to the town meeting, so go ahead.
I would just add, I mean, this is, that's a perfect example of Fireside Catering, of a contentious article or discussion at town meeting we've had in the past that has turned out to be a wonderful addition to the town, and in fact, now is giving us more money than we ever thought it would. So I think, to your point, this is a headline example of that.
In the end, the community comes to a reasonable judgment, and it might take us some extra time, but it actually does. And that's one of the joys and pains of local participatory democracy. I apologize, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I'd love to call attention to a couple of CPC projects that have brought forward.
Go ahead, please.
One's about $49,000 for a memorial, a global war and terror memorial at Patriots Park that was brought forward to us this year to memorialize some of those, I'm going to say forgotten wars, but the more recent wars. And our veteran community is really, really strongly behind that, as is the Select Board. Additionally, we had, the Community Preservation Act, some funds had been used to acquire, for Ridgewood Cemetery, to acquire the second burial ground on Academy Road. This is something they didn't have to do, but given their expertise in the work that they do at Ridgewood, this is a historic asset at the town that just happens to be a cemetery. So in recent years, they've been working to restore that. And in the process, using ground penetrating radar and other techniques, they've actually uncovered tombs that were previously unknown to anyone. So a major CPC project this year, I think it's around $900,000 or so, is used in the restoration of those tombs, so we can help educate the community about, you know, some of the lives that were lived for the folks that were buried in that cemetery.
A very poignant circumstance, particularly as we celebrate almost 400 years of town meeting in our own community, but as we're amidst celebrating 250 years since the Revolution, and our own contribution as a community, where many are unaware that some 329 men marched on April 19th from the North Parish Church to Concord and ended up chasing the retreating British at that moment in time. And then just two months later, five sons of our community, including two black men, one recently emancipated and another still a slave, died at Bunker Hill. So entirely appropriate that we appreciate the heritage of those people who came before us. So let's talk about zoning has usually been something that has been very, very contentious in our community. I don't see a lot of that this year pleasantly, but I know that there's at least one item around something called ADU, Accessible Dwelling Units. Can you give us a primer?
Sure, I think it's always a little bit intimidating, you open the warrant and you see all of the language-
Thirty pages, yes.
-for the zoning articles, and realize that it's only this paragraph that's getting changed.
You confess, of course, to reading every word of that.
Every word, every word.
Proudly confess.
Yes. Brian and I may be the only two people, in addition to Melissa, who's done that, so.
So with regards to ADUs, Accessory Dwelling Units, you'll recall, the Commonwealth, as a part of its housing initiative, put forward a requirement that every town adopt an ADU bylaw. And in typical Commonwealth fashion, it was a little vague, right? There was not a whole lot of direction given to towns other than, you're going to allow ADUs. So our planning board set about trying to bracket that within the rules. And that's what this article does this year, is it actually gets a little bit more definition around what is an ADU in North Hanover? What is allowed, what isn't allowed? And it meets with the letter of the law from the Commonwealth, after a lot of back and forth on clarifying questions of what is and isn't allowed. And this allows us to put, to put more brackets so that it's not completely out of control. There were a lot of unclear questions, such as, if you have an existing two-family, can you put two ADUs on that lot by right? So we got some answers to some of those questions.
And the answer to that question is?
The answer is no. It is by lot, and it still has to meet all those different zoning requirements. Can you put an ADU in your front yard? Those sorts of questions were all addressed as a part of this. So it tightens it up. And you'll also note that we had within North Hanover what was known as a family suite bylaw, which is very similar to an ADU, but it required a, to be occupied by a family relation. And these laws don't necessarily conflict, but they're somewhat similar to each other. So the planning board is recommending a sunsetting of that family suite bylaw over a period of the next year, year and a half, as the ADU bylaw takes effect.
Appreciate that. And the other part of town meeting is that citizens have the right to petition town meeting for any purpose that they think appropriate. And as I recollect, we have two citizen petitions in front of us this year, one having to deal with the budget. Perhaps you can educate us about that, and then we'll go to the second one in a moment.
I think, Melissa, it might be more appropriate for you to answer this one, and then I can sort of add in.
Yeah, that's fine. So we do have some dueling warrant articles this year, which is always fun. And we have a citizen petition that is attempting to transfer $730,000 from free cash to the special ed stabilization account. I have an article that I put forward to dissolve the special ed stabilization account for a couple of reasons. One being that I would like us to use the Finance Committee Reserve instead. I think it's a better funding source for two reasons. One, it's not creating a structural deficit, because it's something that's always funded. And two, we can get to it at different times, so it's really difficult to have to wait till May to find out if you're going to have an article or not, are you going to have your transfer or not. So I've been working with the proponent of the citizen petition, trying to find some middle ground, and I'm hoping that we'll find that as we go.
We'll deal with that at town meeting, perhaps.
And I would just, I think that was perfectly summed up. And I would just add that the Finance Committee is very supportive of the town manager's warrant article. We think it is good financial policy to move this out of the stabilization fund and into a fund that can be accessed by the town at any point during the year, so that if emergencies do arise, it's something we can get to when needed, instead of having to wait for town meeting to ask town meeting to appropriate those funds.
So does the school committee have a horse in this race relative to special needs?
Yes, absolutely. So we are also supportive of dissolving the Special Education Stabilization Fund. We feel, as you know, our special education expenses are unknown, they fluctuate quite often, and to be, have to wait to be able to transfer that money, it creates a hardship and an unknown. So this definitely allows us to be able to access that more freely to support our special education needs.
A hundred percent agree. This is where we are right now. It's one of the things that, as we look at FY '25, and we are carrying a deficit right now, but it's something that we are dependent upon town meeting in order to close that deficit, in order to use that.
So we have two solutions with a common end but different means, and as usual, the citizens of North Hanover will make that determination singly at town meeting in their legislative form of government. The last citizen petition has to do with the town election. Perhaps you can give us a primer on that request.
Sure, so the proponent of that article is trying to move the town election about a month later than when it currently is, a little bit closer to town meeting, hoping for, I think, better weather during campaign season and having a little bit more information about how some of the elected officials vote on the different budgets and other warrant articles.
Those of us who've been on a ballot before can attest to some appreciation to potentially warmer weather, but notwithstanding that, does the Select Board have a recommendation on that?
The Select Board recommended unfavorable action on that at a recent meeting. And if I could summarize the challenges, one is it puts a lot more stress on the town clerk's office, being that much closer to town meeting. And additionally, you know, with our requirement in our bylaws that newly elected members are immediately sworn in, it truncates that time period between when the new members are sworn in in town meeting, right? So it's a lot of cramming. It's already a very short time period for someone to get on board and be ready to go for town meeting. So that was, if I could summarize kind of what the, how the Select Board felt. I think, you know, the proponent felt that, you know, more time for, you know, positions to be known and for situations to be known, and of course, the better weather for door knocking and sign holding, can't hurt. And I think the, what drove that particular petition was, we've had a lot of uncontested elections recently in town. And, you know, I think the goal of that is, you know, more competitive races, more competitive environment, which, you know, could serve the town better. That was, if I could summarize his position, so.
Appreciate that. Do we have any other final comments or articles or interest that anybody wishes to address?
So I don't have anything about any particular articles, but I would respectfully remind and ask that the citizens come out to town meeting and to participate. It is an important part of the process of being a citizen of North Hanover, and not only is it important and critical, it is fun. And maybe that's just my own perspective, but I find town meetings to be fun, which is probably why I'm sitting up here today. But I think it's critically important this year for folks to come out and to participate, and I would just implore everybody to try and make the time to do so.
I would echo what Donovan says. You know, there's an old axiom that says, decisions are made by those who show up. And we recognize the challenges of being at town meeting. It's a lengthy meeting at a weeknight. We understand the challenges of parents with kids. We're all parents of children ourselves. The town meeting has made efforts to address those sort of things with onsite daycare and whatnot, make town meeting, you know, even more accessible. But we're going to spend $135 million, and, you know, this is our opportunity for a community of 20,000-plus registered voters to, you know, have your say in how the town is governed, how we spend our money. And I think it's really, really critically important for something that is really complex, so.
I would just say, watch out for our warrant article of the day. Our warrant's now available on the website. We've got FAQs about the budget. Any information you possibly could want is there, but don't hesitate to reach out, call us, email us, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's a terrific service that the community's been providing.
Well, I would just, I would echo what they're saying, but also, you know, encourage citizens to do their research, so that they're prepared when they go into town meeting, you know, the questions that they may have that have not yet been answered. All town meetings are recorded, Select Board meetings, Finance Committee meetings, School Board meetings are all recorded. You can go look back, especially the past few months, see how those discussions have come about, and hopefully answer questions, so we're all prepared for our votes.
I guess my only thing I would add to that is, I would hope that people would continue to stay engaged after town meeting. I think that town meeting is one opportunity to come, have your vote be heard, but what we, what I have seen is that we really need that continued engagement. Just as Ms. Koenig just said, all the board meetings are taped, so even if you can't come, please watch them on, you know, on cam. Please watch them on the local channel. Continue to stay engaged, because I think it's really one of the only ways that we're going to continue to sustain the work that we're doing and to be able to move forward. We talked about the debt exclusion. I mean, I can speak just for school budget, for Kittredge School, but you need to sort of get engaged and stay engaged.
I appreciate that, and I'll just add my own invitation. Town meeting this year will be held in the Field House. That holds about 2,900 people, and there's some expectation that we may meet or exceed that. That would be an enormously welcoming circumstance. But we have rules in which town meeting is engaged. We become, you become legislators when you walk into town meeting, and at that moment, you have an extra responsibility, not only to represent your own interest and belief, but to do that which you believe is best for the community as a whole. So I invite you to participate in town meeting. Childcare is made available. If for some reason you can't come, we have an initiative in North Hanover that allows you to remote text, email, or phone in questions, because as I like to say, while all power is in the room, not all knowledge may be there. But I expect with all of the good work that this group have done, many citizens who have even different opinions come to this in good faith. And it's my expectation that we'll have considerate, civil, and good-faith judgments that will be made on Tuesday, May 13th, at North Hanover High School. Please join us, and I thank this terrific crew for their openness and their ability to be able to articulate what's important to the community as a whole. Welcome, everybody, and thank you.